We are live.
Great. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Planning Commission meeting September 30th, 2025. And I'll just read a few introductory comments before we establish a quorum. During the public hearings, the commission will only acknowledge speakers addressing the items listed for the public hearing. Speakers are limited to one appearance of three minutes per public hearing item. Applicants are limited to a 10-minute presentation of their proposal and are allowed a five-minute rebuttal at the close of the public hearing. Speakers are determined on a first-come, first-served basis. The speaker may include a visual or audio presentation, provided that the presentation is received by the clerk at least 48 hours before the "from the public" session, which the speaker plans to speak. The time limits set forth here should not include any time during which applicant or other speakers responded to questions asked by the commission. Timekeeping is conducted by our amazing clerk. In order to give all speakers equal treatment and courtesy, the Planning Commission requests that speakers adhere to the following guidelines: When called, state your name, address, and magisterial district. Address comments directly to the Planning Commission as a whole. If you exceed your allotted time, you'll be asked to end your comments. If the speaker does not use all allotted time, the unused time may not be shared with another speaker. All comments are recorded and published on the Almarle County website. So with that, let's establish a quorum. May we have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Bivins.
Present.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne is not here.
Great. Thank you. So we have a quorum, and with that, I will open it up for public comment on matters pending before the commission but not listed for a public hearing on the agenda. Would anybody like to speak to a matter not listed on the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioners like to pull the item from the consent agenda? Draft meeting minutes, September 9th, 2025. If not, may I hear a motion?
So move, Chair.
Give me a second.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missel?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. With that, I will open the public hearing, and we will begin with, and actually end with as well, since it's the only public hearing item, CPA 2021-2 AC44 Comp Plan Update Final Document Recommendation. And if I might, before staff rolls, just to give us a little bit of a roadmap for this evening, it's a little bit, it's interesting, you know, we've been, as we'll hear from staff, we've been working on this for, what, three years now or so? So there's been lots of, four years, thank you, but who's counting, right? There's been a lot of opportunity, obviously, for public input, and as you can imagine, in advance of this public hearing, we've received additional public input just over the last day or two. And so staff has done a great job of assembling those for us in a sort of summary document. And in addition to reviewing that, we will also have, obviously, open public comment this evening. It's part of the public hearing, and we'll be taking into consideration those comments shared this evening as well. What we'll be doing as a commission is we'll be, obviously, listening to all of the public comment as we're going forward, as we're hearing. Take notes on those things that really rise to the service surface as items you, as a commissioner, would like to champion. And so we will then, after the closing of the public hearing, go through that list, essentially, your list, and then also some of the comments that have come in over the last few days, and have an opportunity to summarize briefly what we would like to see in terms of, if any, amendments to the comprehensive plan. Staff will then take those down and summarize those together. We'll get our heads together. We might take a short recess. We'll get our heads together, and then we'll come back, and we'll review that list of summary amendment recommendations. That will then be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. Sound right? Sound good to everybody? All right. So I think I would probably stress brevity, but completeness as we do that, but we'll get there in just a minute. So with that, let's open it up for staff to present the staff report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First of all, Ben Holtz, I'm with the Long Range Planning Division, and I'll be presenting tonight. And we'll keep this pretty brief, this staff presentation, so that we allow plenty of time for public comment and for you all to share your feedback as well. So we'll be covering, we're going to take a look at the upcoming schedule again, and I'll give a brief recap of the project phases for the benefit of our audience, just to remind the process to get to this point. We'll also talk about major points of emphasis with AC44 and some of the differences between this plan and the 2015 plan. I'll then review some of the notable changes made to the draft document, followed by some details of plan implementation before we open our discussion period. So in terms of the schedule, we began this current Phase Four with an initial draft document that was published in August, shortly followed by an open house to the community members that was held on August 21st. Then we went into our work sessions to review this draft document with both the Planning Commission and the board, so we met with you all on August 26th. We then took it to the board on September 10th, and we did not finish our work session discussion with the board, so we're actually having a continued work session tomorrow. And that brings us to our public hearings, of course, with our Planning Commission hearing today, and then we have one scheduled with the board on October 15th, which is our anticipated adoption date. I'd also like to note that the effective date of this comprehensive plan would be January 1st, 2026, and I'll get into that a little bit more later. So that brings us to the four project phases. In Phase One, we began with public engagement to acquire community priorities for the plan and establish a vision for AC44. That was captured in our AC44 framework, which included the four guiding principles. And those were created to provide direction for the rest of the project, as well as the plan content. In Phase One, we also reviewed our existing growth management policy to ascertain what aspects were needed to provide updated guidance for both the development areas and the rural areas of the county. We also completed our 2022 build-out analysis to establish a baseline for growth capacity within the development areas. And then in Phase Two, we drafted goals and objectives for each topic chapter. And we also developed our planning toolkits to provide coordinated guidance on land use and transportation planning, and that in turn produced our activity centers. In Phase Three, we drafted actions to support topic goals and objectives, and we also developed our big moves to guide plan implementation. So now in Phase Four, we are drafting and refining the plan document as we approach adoption of AC44. We also recently completed the 2025 build-out analysis that will be incorporated into the plan appendix. And this phase, of course, will conclude with the public hearings to review and adopt the final plan document. So throughout the entire project, public engagement has been a critical component of AC44. We've had more than 40,000 visitors to our AC44 website, and throughout the four phases, more than 2,700 people have participated in AC44 engagement in the form of online surveys, email comments, chat kit discussions, and attendance through either in-person or virtual events. So getting back to the plan itself, some of the notable points of emphasis for AC44 include integrating board priorities of equity and climate action throughout the plan document, again, conducting those two build-out analyses to inform our development areas utilization. We have an increased emphasis on increasing density within our development areas and multimodal transportation planning. Also, we've updated our plan for activity centers by reducing the previous total number of centers, and we've better defined the location of those identified centers, so they're not just a letter C on a map. We've also consolidated the land use categories. Previously had more than 20 categories. It's been reduced to 12 categories within the development areas. And we've also incorporated other county plans, including housing Almarle, our Economic Development Strategic Plan, and our Climate Action Plan. AC44 also identifies big moves to guide implementation efforts, and I'd also like to note that we've organized the plan content into a four-part document that we hope is easier to navigate and use. The overall length of the plan has been reduced to 278 pages in comparison to the previous 406 pages in the 2015 plan, excluding the appendices. So included in your attachments is a summary of document changes that captures the full list of edits that were made to this latest draft. And some of those more notable updates include editing the entire document for consistency and tone, again, updating that land use build-out analysis of the data narrative for those has been updated throughout. We've clarified the criteria for assessing the adequacy of land in the development areas in Part Two. Within the development areas chapter, we've created more future land use maps. We now have enlarged areas showing the various neighborhoods within the development areas, so you can see a higher level of detail for the future land use map. We also removed rural interstate interchanges within the rural area land use chapter, and we added an action to address childcare within the thriving economy chapter. We've added actions to promote awareness of affordable housing options and supporting aging-in-place in housing. We've updated the existing Parks and Facilities table to include equestrian and biking trails, and also whether the park is accessible by transit. In the Cultural Resources chapter, we added a call-out box to clarify what historic resources are. And for the big moves, we've revised move number seven to strengthen social connection and community well-being in the implementation chapter. So looking ahead, staff has begun work on an implementation plan to guide AC44 efforts after plan adoption. Once adopted, the proposed effective date, again, for AC44 is January 1st, 2026. And this delayed effective date is intended to allow time for staff, partner agencies, applicants, and other plan users to get accustomed to AC44 and its requirements while staff conducts plan education. Staff's implementation plan will also include a revised process for future comprehensive plan amendment applications. We will also reinforce the connection between AC44 and the board's strategic plan to better align implementation, policy, and funding. Staff will also further refine our process for small area plans, including those activity centers, and incorporating multimodal transportation plans. AC44 will also continue to inform the zoning ordinance modernization project as our county code is updated and rewritten. And last, staff will further develop metrics and tracking process to evaluate and report on plan implementation progress. And so just to kind of preview what, you know, how the discussion will go, we'd like, after we hear from the public, to hear from the commissioners about any specific edits that you have to suggest. And we also have a motion to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, should you wish to forward this to the board with a recommendation of approval. So, thank you, and happy to answer any questions before we turn it over to public comment.
Great. Thank you. Great presentation. Any questions for staff? Start down with Mr. Commissioner Moore.
Not for staff right now. I'll be part of the conversation as we go.
Awesome. Mr. Bivins?
If you could just give us a little bit, thank you, well, first of all, thank you again for bringing us up to the state, and also thank you for the work that you've done, and thank you for putting up with certainly my crankiness over a certain period of time. I will try to minimize my crankiness tonight in hopes of getting home sooner than later. But, and one of your pieces there, you said that there's a citizen initiative for changing for updates or modifications to the comp plan once it's adopted. Could you just lay that out a bit about how citizens would bring forward any suggestions for, that's not tonight, that would bring forward after adopted, how they might put that before a future planning commission?
Yes, Mr. Bivins. Back from my time working here, maybe about 10 years ago, staff made a decision and worked with the board to get that approved to limit and remove, actually, citizen-initiated comprehensive plan amendments. It used to be part of the process. I think it was workload question and other reasons. I think we recognize that with the opportunities for somebody to amend the future land use map, really being set upon when we do master plans for each area, that that may not be frequent enough to meet existing conditions and things that are changing in the market. And so we're committed to bringing back a citizen-initiated comprehensive plan process. The exact details of how that works, I would have ideas. I'm not prepared to get into that right this moment, but we will, this is a priority for us, and obviously, we listed it on the slide here, to try and bring that out sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else, Commissioner Bivins?
Well, thank you.
All right. Mr. Murray?
Yes. And Page 25, Action 7.1 was removed. Encourage donations to Almarle County Parks Foundation. Can you explain what that removal was about? Action 7.3.
Sure. Let me pull that up.
In the actual plan, is what you're talking about, what's the page number?
Yeah, so it's Page, for Parks, Page 25, Action 7.1. This is in there, your notes about your additions and removals. It says removed. Encourage donations to Almarle County Parks Foundation. Foundation reference also removed from Action 7.3.
I believe, yeah, go ahead.
Please.
I believe that was in response to the board, that they did not want to confine donations to any one group or organization. So they didn't want to specify a specific group to, you know, submit donations, or for the county to accept donations.
And conversely, that wouldn't necessarily exclude that from going to the foundation. They just didn't want to be naming one body, when it could be multiple groups.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Karazana?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Mr. Firehawk? Okay. I don't have any questions either. Thank you. All right. With that, let's see. The applicant has presented, so we will open it up for public comment, and I think we have a sign-up sheet.
You're right. I'm sorry. I got, I got.
Okay. And just as a reminder, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We'll start with number one, Neil Williamson, and Rob McGinnis is on deck.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Neil Williamson. I serve as the president of the Free Enterprise Forum, a privately funded public policy organization focused on central Virginia's local governments. I'm disappointed, not surprised, but disappointed. Tonight, you will likely advance AC44, a quote "comprehensive" close quote, plan to guide future development and infrastructure spending over the next 20 years. This is a plan for the status quo and will result in further gentrification and less housing affordability across Almarle County. Virginia's state law mandates that all local governments adopt a comprehensive plan to guide future development and ensure orderly growth as outlined in the Code of Virginia. Evaluating AC44 on that code criteria, one must find it's a huge missed opportunity. A failure of this magnitude has many contributors. The Board of Supervisors, who at the outset determined the development areas would not be altered prior to hearing anything from the community. The Planning Commission, who's charged by state code to develop this plan, who unilaterally chose to stick with the binary choice of the development area rural area rather than considering the lasagna model. The planning staff, who at the outset determined none of the comprehensive plan designations, as they existed in the 2015 plan, were to be altered beyond consolidated. And the AC44 public volunteer planners, myself included, who, when staff broke them into three discrete groups, eliminated any institutional memory and effectively castrated their input. This concern is not a surprise to the commission. The Free Enterprise Forum has spoken and written about the plan's pet fall since the outset. We have supported and promoted lasagna more than Olive Garden. The Economic Development Strategic Plan calls out many of these same problems. With so many warnings and three-plus years of public comment, the plan still does so many things that do not alter the status quo. It feels like rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. Considering this plan was delivered behind schedule, and comprehensive plans are supposed to be reviewed every five years, and Almarle's latest process took more than 36 months, I should perhaps take solace that they're likely hiring planners now to work on AC49. Maybe next time, the quote "comprehensive" plan can consider the future instead of perpetuating the status quo, but I know which way I'm betting. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Rob McGinnis, and then Christine Putnam, you're on deck.
It's always a tough act to follow. I'm Rob McGinnis, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. First, I want to thank the Planning Commission and staff and the board, but particularly the Planning Commission right now, for the very important and effective contributions to the AC44 process over the past four years. It's been a long and challenging process. Though there is much that PEC supports in the latest draft of the comp plan update, PEC has a remaining major concern, the proposed process for swapping land between development areas and rural areas. I've submitted some detailed comments before, so I'm not going to go into all those details, but I do want to say that the process for assessing future land swaps should be more effectively addressed when developing development area neighborhood master plans, when they're updated and adopted into the comprehensive plans. And there is the potential for land swaps to be addressed as part of the process for preparing the proposed rural area land use plan. In addition, PEC strongly supports the revised Transfer Development Rights Program Action 2.4. PEC strongly supports the removal of information on sending and receiving zones. PEC also strongly supports the removal of the narrative text and the related action item regarding the small area plans for Yancey Mills and Chadwell Interstate Interchanges. Land uses at rural interchanges can be addressed as part of the process to prepare the proposed rural area land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Putnam and Doug Holliday, thank you.
Hello. My name is Christine Putnam, and I live in the Scottsville District. I'm also a member of the Natural Heritage Committee, which is charged by the Board of Supervisors to devise on matters related to natural resource and biodiversity protection. I want to first congratulate and extend my gratitude to you and the AC44 team for the work that went into developing the comp plan. The NHC was able to provide feedback, and we've been pleased to see this feedback reflected in the final draft. At the last NHC meeting, we discussed one important addition, it's a little one, to the environmental stewardship chapter that we hope you might consider. This is to add a sensible and achievable step to Section 4.4, that the county use locally native trees and shrubs for at least 80% of plantings on county-owned land. This is a recommendation from the Biodiversity Action Plan, one that some county departments are already following. And as you probably are well aware, native plants provide the foundation for a healthy ecosystem, and they are key to protecting biodiversity, which we can see just outside this building. Almarle County has been a leader with its native plant demonstration beds at both the McIntyre and Fifth Street County Office buildings. We also host a webpage, and we have a native plant database. And so I'm also on the steering committee of the Plant Northern Piedmont Native Plant Steering Committee. And I can just tell you that that involves many other counties, and we are definitely a leader, and people look to us for that. So I brought you a copy of the plant guide today to share with you, and you will see that it includes photos and references to the county office building demonstration sites. But anyhow, thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you for all of the work that you've done.
Thank you. Doug Holliday and Dick Payne is on deck.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Doug Holliday, and I'm here with my friend and partner, Dick Payne. Together, we are the owners of the Sweet Spot of Almarle LLC, which owns property in the San Miller District. We're at Dressing Parcel 7548, that is located southwest the interchange of US 64 and 29. It borders the SEEG property, which is to the east, and the future Edgeware Parkland, which is to the west. We are here to ask you to consider recommending a change to the parcel's designation from industrial purple to community mixed-use pink on the AC44 future land use map. We think this change is consistent with the county's vision of having land that supports a variety of desired uses that are more appropriate for this area than the uses supported by the current industrial designation. By way of background, in 2015, the Chutes Brewery of Bend, Oregon, had an interest in purchasing our property to build an East Coast brewery. At the time, there was a shortage of industrial land in the county. The land map required a change of our property. We agreed with the county's request for industrial designation on the land use map. As events unfolded, the chutes did not come to the county, but our parcel is still designated industrial use on the comprehensive plan map. For the last 10 years, there has not been any interest in our land for industrial purposes. However, there has been interest in developing the property for other uses. Our parcel was part of the SEEG rezoning application for two years. While the SEEG property developer decided not to purchase our property, they recognized that a mixed-use plan was appropriate for the property. As you can imagine, given the shortage of available and developable land in the remaining development area, interest in this property for uses other than heavy industrial continues. With this background, I'd like to introduce my partner, Dick Payne. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you to all of you all on the Planning Commission for giving us your time tonight. I'm going to briefly summarize the reasons we believe the future land use map change makes sense. We do want to emphasize that we are not asking for zoning change, only a change in the future land use map. This change from industrial to community mixed-use makes sense for the following reasons. First, I won't go into further detail on what Doug mentioned, but the industrial designation appears to be outdated. Second, the industrial land supply has increased since 2015, when our land was put into the comprehensive plan and designated industrial. As you all know, North Fork now has a 14-acre pad-ready site within 300 acres zone planned development industrial park. Ravanna Futures has 172 acres zone light industrial. Sweet Spot Site is not competitive with these industrially zoned properties, where it is easier to develop with ready access to roads and utilities. Three, there is a community benefit to community mixed-use. It supports a wide variety of desired uses, including commercial, office, retail, light industrial, R&amp;D, residential, institutional. R and D, residential, institutional. In short, everything but heavy industrial, which it is designated for today. Four, compatibility. Our property is compatible with the SEEG property. The SEEG property is designated for community mixed use in the Flum and its rezoning application proposes a community mixed use development designating the Sweet Spot Parcel for Community Mixed Use would align with the adjacent land uses. There are also location advantages to a designation change. Community mixed use is more appropriate than industrial at the edge of the development area. It is also adjacent to the future Hedgerow Park, where potential pedestrian connections with future zoning are possible. There's also an opportunity to integrate with SEEG's sidewalk and trail network, shops, and employment centers. Next, flexibility to develop land more sensitively. Sensitively, community mixed use supports a future rezoning application for mixed use development with smaller building footprints compared to many heavy industrial uses that require a large flat pad site for a single-story facility, allowing more flexibility around steep slopes and other sensitive areas. Finally, it supports a future rezoning application for compatible mixed use development within the development area that supports a more diversified tax base. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And last on my list, although that doesn't mean we have to stop, is Carol, I think it's Courtney, Courtney?
Good evening. My name is Carol Courtney and I'm from the Southern Environmental Law Center. We appreciate the substantial amount of work that has been undertaken by the commission and county staff over the last few years to get to this point. There have been significant improvements since the plan's first drafts were released for review, including one change I want to speak in support of tonight, a standalone chapter on the county's growth management policy. The county has long been looked to as a model statewide for adopting a growth policy that supports more livable and equitable communities, promotes economic development, encourages rural enterprise, and protects the environment. A strong growth management policy also delivers significant fiscal benefits to the county and its residents by making it easier and less expensive to provide public infrastructure and effective public services like transit, emergency services, and schools. And it protects the county's invaluable natural areas that, among other things, safeguard the quality of our drinking water, drive economic growth and tourism, and help the county meet its climate goals. Ultimately, the principles of responsible growth underpin almost every issue in the comprehensive plan. We strongly support the county's decision to have a standalone growth management chapter to emphasize the foundational nature of this policy in the county's long-term planning. As part of the comprehensive plan update, the board found that an expansion of the development areas is not needed at this time. This aligns with the findings of the 2022 build-out analysis and the recent 2025 update. Both showed significant capacity remaining in our development areas, enough to accommodate projected growth over at least the next 20 years. Because premature expansion of the development areas would undermine the county's growth policy, we remain concerned about the inclusion of criteria for development area boundary revisions in the comprehensive plan. Such criteria should instead be developed through a separate planning process in order to give them appropriate attention and to allow for adequate public input. If the criteria are retained in the update, we urge you to consider modifying the title on page 12 of that chapter to make clear that these are simply the initial criteria for assessing underperforming areas in the development areas for removal and making changes to the title of the table on page 13. So it reads that it is the initial criteria for assessing the adequacy of land in the development areas. These small changes will emphasize, as the comp plan already states on page 11 of that chapter, that these criteria are simply the starting point for any revisions to the boundaries. Once again, I commend you all on the immense amount of work that it took to getting to this point, and I thank you for consideration of these comments.
Thank you. That is the end of my sign up list. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this matter? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone online?
No, sir, there isn't.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. So by my counting, the comments that we just received were also received via mail, right? So we didn't really receive any, other than potentially the first one, any really additional comments that would be woven into any amendments that we might want to make. Does everybody agree with that?
Sorry, I missed the last part there.
Just that we didn't receive any additional comments verbally here this evening that were in addition to what we received via email.
If there was emails today, I was out in the field.
No problem. Okay. So what we'll do is we'll go through what we received from staff just like an hour ago. So you were on a bus somewhere, probably.
Driving.
Yeah, you're driving a bus. So we'll just go through those methodically and then there's always time for follow-up as well.
I would just, for Mr. Firehawk, what we did is you've been receiving emails from interested parties for several days. We just, we've collected those into a single document and that's what.
Okay. Yes, I have read all my emails received before 7:00 AM today.
So there were some others that came in, as you can imagine. That's part of the challenge that we had was kind of trying to corral all of these and acknowledge the fact that this is a relatively short timeline to turn it around for Board of Supervisors. So if you all are okay with this, and I'm open to any Commissioner Bivens.
I just need to state upfront that I am going to be resistant to this process right now because I am disappointed that we would, given all of the feedback, all of the, all the interactions we had, that people who were, who took the opportunity to send us an email are going to get a last bite at the apple. There's something that doesn't feel as a process piece for me that I'm willing to engage in any serious edits that our staff had not had an opportunity to reflect upon and then provide us, provide us feedback. There's a number of the ideas in here that had, over time, that have been put aside for some reasons. There are some pieces that the supervisors have been very clear about, for instance, about the addition to the development area and how they want to keep their hand on that. I know there's some members of the commission who have wrestled with that issue, but I want to be real careful that we're not doing something that we've always said we wouldn't do. And that's wordsmith at the last moment. And that's what this feels like it is to me. It feels like we're wordsmithing because some people took the opportunity either to send group emails because a number of the things that we received over the last 48 hours, for all intent and purpose, was the exact same email, except they changed their name at the top and at the bottom. And so I need to sort of declare that upfront that I think we're doing something that we said we would never do, and that's to wordsmith on the fly, a document that it's taken us four years to get to tonight.
And I'll say, since we're just in discussion, I share some of those concerns. I know we talked a little bit about that. I, I think that as I'm looking, the way I'm looking at this, and it may be wrong, totally open to this being the wrong way to look at it. It's a public hearing, right? So when we hear public hearings for developments, we receive comments from the community and sometimes those turn into conditions, sometimes they're recorded as here's how we feel as a planning commission and we forward those comments on to the board. So in a sense, yeah, this is a four-year project. Some developments that come before us have taken four years to put forward as well, right? So there's a lot of process that went with this that don't typically go with a lot of other developments. So that makes it a little bit different in that they've had opportunities to, they being, the community has had opportunities to provide feedback. So my thought was that we're essentially doing that again. We're looking at this and we're saying, these are comments that have come in. This is the public hearing. It's what it's for, is to receive comments. And so we're notifying the board that we have supported these general comments or we, you know, they're there for their reference. And, and so that was a way that we just felt like the, really the only way and the fair way to get at this moving forward. And so then take that one, one more step further. You're right. It's like the squeaky wheel, right? There are some things that have come to us and I scratch my head and I say, why now? Why not a year ago? Why not two years ago? I mean, this has been going on for quite a while and it's been. So that's a little bit of a hard thing for me to get my head around, but we're in discussion. What do you all think, Spirek?
I don't necessarily disagree with what you've both said. I will say though, that the comments from the Southern Environmental Law Center about the criteria for looking at the growth area expansion, what that would be. That wasn't something that was crisply developed a year ago and we've just been looking at it all along, okay? But when I read that, so my comment back to them would be that when I read that, I did read it as already initial ideas, that I didn't read what's in the comp plan as the criteria, because it's, it really read to me like, these are some first thoughts. And maybe that sounds namby-pamby to people, but I think that it would be, have to be a a really specific process that we would have to undergo to develop that criteria. And that, developing something as robust as it should be, like something like you see in the Portland metro region, for example, that I've already forwarded to staff two years ago, I think that that, that is really complicated and I agree. It would, it'd be a process to develop that. So I didn't, I didn't read the way that it is worded in the comp plan now as this is it. I was just like, these are some things that we need to consider. Because it was vague. Let's be honest. It was vague, but that's because it's not fully fleshed out.
And it's a comp plan.
Right. So I was comfortable with the level of detail that's in there. I didn't see that we would take that and go, okay, we've got it here. Now let's, you know, start monkeying with the growth area boundaries. I think we would, it would need further fleshing out, but I'm comfortable with the level of detail that's in here.
So that's exactly the kind of conversation that we should be having. Because that's, that's addressing one of the public comments and that comment will still go to the board.
Right.
And they'll be able to determine whether or not they feel the same way, right?
And just to continue that for just a second, I think the key piece in there is that we're not the, the Planning Commission, whichever it is in the future, is not the initiator, it's not the initiator of that issue. The board, I believe, according to what is laid out and what, according to what the board has said, has said that they're going to be the ones that ask us and with staff to do that. But that's not a self-initiated process. That's not, that's not a Planning Commission initiated process.
Well, it could be if you wanted it to be.
So, so I wanted to address that a little bit because I think that as it stands, that section, if you just read that at its face, particularly the page about properties being removed from the development area and moved to the rural area, it's so vague that almost, that a majority of our development area currently could meet that criteria. So I see that as very problematic. And some of the factors I think we really need to consider is particularly about taking properties in the development area and moving them to the rural area. Is the property removed already developed? Does the property being removed from the development area already have water and sewer? If it, if it doesn't, would we deny future connections even if it is in the jurisdictional area? What percentage of tree or native cover does the property have currently? What percentage of the site has been graded? What percentage of the site is impervious surface, including lawn? Most rural area properties are downzoned in 1980 to form the rural area. Would any property removed from the development area also be downzoned to match the surrounding rural area? Or we just create a non-conforming area? How suitable is the property for rural area uses, agricultural, forestry, conservation? Perhaps we should zone the property to clearly indicate its use, A1 agricultural, C1 conservation, et cetera. The development area doesn't have protections on intermittent streams, except for water supply areas. Should we disqualify properties for removal from the development area if they're already buried their intermittent strains? The rural area doesn't have managed slopes. All critical slopes are preserved. Would all managed slopes become preserved? What if they've already been built on or otherwise impaired their managed slopes? Would the removal from the development area be voluntary with permission of the owners of parcels affected? How would they be compensated for the significant reduction of their property value? Is the county willing to go to court to defend another downzoning? Typically, rural areas can expect a lower level of service. In which ways would services be reduced for this property being removed? No more sidewalks, road improvements? What happens to places with comp plan designation for greenways and open space? Do they lose that designation? So I know I went on a little bit on this, but the point is that there's a lot of factors at play that really aren't being discussed here. And I think that it needs a lot of work. While I would propose, you know, as it has been said, you know, moving this off to another process, if it is to remain, I have submitted some suggested language that, you know, we can go to later. But I think it's, I think it merits a lot more discussion than it's getting.
If I could jump in on this, I mean, we, we know that we're getting close to filling up the development area. That we've got, it's not full per se, but we're getting there and we're going to get there. It's just 5% of the county's land. And I feel like we should be starting these conversations now about, you know, where to expand the development area, not, I mean, I feel like sometimes we're living in the movie Encanto here, like, oh, we don't talk about Bruno, you know? Or we ask 60 questions to delay and delay and delay. And I think, you know, some folks have brought up this idea of a development area swap. There's the notion in there as well. I actually want to make a pitch and suggestion that we start with the designated development areas from around 1979. I'd be in favor of starting with that as our baseline. That would be a good starting point for how much acreage to move into the development areas. Because back then, we had 10% of our land as development areas. And I think we could take those acreages and move them closer to today's development area in a way that would make sense, given build-out patterns and water availability and all that. But the idea of just like some little small pocket neighborhoods being switched over, let's start with where we started. And the swap we got no swap out of, let's start with that and swap it into the development areas so we can actually grow in a way that's manageable and sustainable so people can afford to live here.
So let me suggest a way we approach this, because this is a subject that's kind of front and center. It's one of the main subjects that's come out here, right? It's also something we could talk about for a day, I'm sure, and we've talked about it a lot in previous meetings as well. So I would suggest maybe looking at GMP 11, that page, if you have that in front of you. And at the bottom, I'm just going to read the process and if you, this, this is sort of getting to what we've been talking about in terms of the land swaps, is talking about the idea of potentially having this be part of a, let's see, more focused study, substantial public engagement, et cetera, et cetera. And it says, "Ideally, the need for a development area boundary revision would be identified by a future land planning effort. The Board of Supervisors could pursue a boundary, could pursue a boundary revision independently of a future land planning, area land planning effort and should request that the county executive direct county staff to develop a development areas report. The report would evaluate a variety of factors, provide information through maps, order of magnitude, so information through maps, order of magnitude, cost estimates, and other resources as necessary. The criteria on the following page provides a starting point for consideration of potential revisions."
That's the way I read it.
And then it goes on.
Some things to consider in the future when you go through this more detailed and much more factual and statistically based process than, than more emotionally based process.
And so I think, if I could add, I mean, if there, if there was a way, instead of an addendum or some point like that, to make a suggestion to the board that they begin that process as soon as, as soon as they, as soon as possible. I think that would be helpful, but I don't necessarily.
Because people want clarity.
Yeah, exactly.
Investors want expectations, understanding what's intended.
I don't necessarily, I think the, the, the following criteria, on the following criteria is a starting point. Allows the full breath, even our colleague here, his, his items could be included in there, but I, I think this is good today.
So I think, I think, and I understand what you're saying and I agree with much of what you said. I personally think that, it sounds like there's agreement here that what we have written, so let's take kind of a straw poll, what we have written here is sufficient in terms of its coverage to provide the ability in the future to look in more detail at these areas that are essentially being planned and that have these initial criteria. Is there, so, so let me just push you a little bit on that very briefly. Is there a way that you'd see that language being changed to reflect the comments that we're having?
Oh, absolutely. So on, on page 12, my proposed wording would, I think we need more criteria, basically.
I think this opens us up for also having additional criteria.
So, so I think, you know, even as a starting point, and I'm not saying these are the only things, but I think the criteria that I would say, first, I think the first bullet point should just be removed outright because it doesn't make any sense. So I'd propose that we So I'd propose that we replace that section with locations where rural area designation would provide a tangible conservation benefit, including protection of intermittent streams, enhanced protection of critical slopes, or important environmental features or habitats designated the biodiversity action plan, otherwise subject to high density development. May also include areas designated green systems where the rural area designation would facilitate protection and/or public access. So I think that, that by itself, that, that really helps frame like why we would do it. Also agricultural properties, which are more consistent with rural area uses, there are, there are some farms that are in the development area now that I don't foresee ever, there's ever being developed, any kind of residential use. Locations with significant topographic or environmental constraints, which reduce in areas potential to meet, recommend densities and intensities of use and the ability to provide an interconnected street network. Locations with limited public infrastructure and access, capacity and access, this would include existing road conditions and capacity. Where development may be contrary to Virginia's Department of Transportation goals and recommendations where connections to existing public roads, water, sewer and infrastructure are challenging. Locations with existing water and sewer access would be disqualified, absent additional, additional factors that make them more suitable for rural uses. Current uses and densities should be consistent with neighboring rural area properties and not result in non-conforming uses or uses inconsistent with the goals and recommendations for the rural area. I think this is important too, that so we're not just taking an already developed area. And then just moving it to the rural area and just changing the color in the map. Locations must have limited impervious surfaces and limited grading, which would otherwise would prevent the county from serving rural area uses like agricultural forestry, recreation and conservation. It must be contiguous with the rural area and would be down zoned to match neighboring rural area properties and rural area zoning. So I think, I think that these are, are ways that if you're gonna, if we're gonna have this page here, I think these are some great criteria to get us thinking about ways to do it responsibly. That think about like why we're doing it and, and they're taken to some of the factors that I mentioned.
Chair, at this meeting, I don't support any of that, or those changes.
I'm sorry, say again.
At this meeting in particular, where we aren't going to wordsmith everything, I don't support any of those suggested changes. At most, I would support putting the word potential in the, in the, in the headline where it says potential criteria.
I was actually gonna.
I just made the same comment to Michael. We just put the word potential or.
I, I, well, I said something different, but I'm fine with that too. I was gonna say criteria for removing underperforming areas from development areas include but are not limited to the following.
I prefer that. I prefer that.
Can we strike bullet one?
Including but not limited to, I think that also shares the spirit of what I was saying.
I mean, i- if nothing else, if we could strike bullet one, because I, I feel like the way bullet one is, is written. It says, you know, we haven't met our goals for, for sidewalks and density, so we're going to just give up and move it to the rural area. That seems counterintuitive. It makes it sound like areas where we actually should invest more, we're just going to give up. And so I don't really understand that. So for example, in Cozay, we have an area next, next to Cozay Park where we've been trying to get sidewalks since forever. And so does that mean that because we haven't been able to develop that sidewalk, that we should just yank that out of the development area and put it in the rural area?
So what I would suggest is what, what you're, what you're saying, it was, I I think, and I understand what you're saying, I, I think you may be, in my opinion, a little bit too far in the weeds. I think what the risk of doing that is, is that you miss something. Like you put them all out there and you say, this is everything, but you actually miss it. I think that if you, if we use that wording included but not limited to, something to that effect. It also means that some of these may not apply. And that first bullet may not apply in that sense, and that could not be one of the criteria. So I'll just throw that out as a suggestion, but if others disagree or.
I'll just put this out there for my colleagues here as we evaluate these comments. So it's, it's an imperfect process and it's an imperfect document. I think we can all agree on that. But, but there is a lot of good that is in here. This section in particular is problematic and I, and I think we all wrestling with that here today. There's been comments. And also when it came out, this was not, you know, four years ago, we didn't have this, three years ago, we didn't have it, two years ago, we didn't, we didn't have this. So it is an opportunity for us to make some adjustments as we recommend this for the board. It's because they're, you know, we need to, that's what we're doing here today. We're recommending it for the Board of Supervisors. And so there are, there are a couple tweaks, there are a couple of things that we could send it along that I think would improve it. And I agree with the comments that have been made on this section. I, I would be in support of the chair's recommendation, because it puts it, what we're signaling to the board is, hey, this is a section that we gotta pay attention to. And we don't think that these criterias are necessarily hitting the mark. So let's sit down, spend some time and evaluate and come up with a, with a better set of criteria for, for this section. So I would be in support of the, the amendments and edits that the chair has recommended.
Can I ask a question? Just, just, so when we look, what are factors versus criteria? Because the factors allow the kinds of things that our colleague is trying to, is trying to, to move forward. To sort of be integrated in the factors. And so I think the factors are also something that would be open for a deeper discussion and to be, and to sort of draw it down into an explicit sort of how, for instance, when you were talking about the potential impacts on opportunities for nearby adjacent properties, that's the whole idea of if you were to move something, how would it impact? Would it remain at the level that it is or would it be? Or would it be down, or would it be down zoned to, to that kind, to that level? I believe the things that you mentioned there could be very strong and important factor, part of the factors. And so I'm just trying to get it, I'm trying to sort of delineate between what is a factor and what is a criteria and.
Yeah, criteria to me is like a rule that you would apply. Factors to consider are many things you should consider in your deliberations.
And I think that's the piece where very, and very few, it's not very often in our document are we that prescriptive. In this document, we are prescriptive in a lot of other places. In fact, when we do the zoning, when, when you all get to do the zoning, you can be as prescriptive as you want to be. But I think this is still a, a, at a higher level that says here are opportunities for you to be prescriptive when you turn it into an ordinance. Or when you do this, or when you do the analysis to get you there.
Do you have a recommended wording change that would?
Nope, I just was trying, also what I'm trying to do is to make sure the record has a distinction that there was a conversation between factors and criteria.
Okay, so.
And I would be, I've just, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I would be comfortable with just saying potential in front of the word criteria. And that, and if you want, if we want, we could add a sentence at the bottom of those, or another sentence. I mean, I thought it was clear in the prior page that these were things that we should consider in the future in order to develop these criteria. So I, I, and, and Commissioner Murray, I think we would need, I would need at least a half day's workshop to really go through and drill down and create that. And so I'm not ready tonight to come, you know, to come up with the criteria and put it in this document. I, I don't think it would do justice to, I just can't. I, I'm sorry. I can't sit around the dais and just make this up cloth tonight. So I, I, I do think it is clear that these are only potential and not limited to these, and that a future process will need to be developed very carefully.
Yeah.
And one that outlines.
What are the criteria?
Both that outlines that, but also that outlines what is the community engagement process?
That's.
They will go along with this as well. I think that is something that we need to. I would, I mean, can you repeat where you could, I, I was very, I didn't write it down, but your, your recommended edit or amendment?
What did you say? Potential criteria?
Yeah, I just had suggested putting the word potential in front of the word criteria.
So potential criteria for removing underperforming areas from the development areas are include but are not limited to the following.
And then at the bottom, if you want to add a sentence that a more, a future process will, can fully flesh out these criteria or whatever, something.
I would actually, I was going in the same place you were in terms of community engagement. It would make me feel more comfortable, even though it's implied, I think.
Yeah, to say that.
Process on page 11, we include something to the effect that are, this process should include a robust community engagement effort.
So so could we at least, you know, as we're looking at this, this chapter, I know you said potential criteria for removing. Perhaps we could add potential criteria for assessing removal under, just add the word assessing in there, so that we can make it clear that we're evaluating our options as opposed to a more definitive state. Cause I think, you know, we've, we've said before, I mean, you know, the assessment may not lead to removal. The assessment may lead to, for example, building for sidewalks or greater investment.
I think that's, I mean, we're wordsmithing, which is what we said we were gonna do, but I think, I think that's, I think we're fine. Everybody's fine with that. So maybe rather than saying, again, wordsmithing, potential criteria for assessing, why don't we just say criteria for assessing the removal of underperforming areas from the development areas? Include the following, or include but are not limited to the following.
That's fine. I'm fine.
Good, good, good straw poll.
I, I mean, I, you know, I, I wanna, perhaps this is not the time where I wanted to say this, but I'm going to say this now. For those.
Cranky pledge.
Yeah, I mean, it's good. For those of you who have not seen this.
Oh, you did. That's amazing.
This is the 2025 Parade of Homes. There are 22 homes in here. Over half are a million dollars or more. Over half are a million dollars or more. I'll go into a further explanation of why I'm gonna get cranky around that topic. But that's one of the reasons why at some point, when we've been consistently building undercapacity at some point, which is effectively a transfer of development land to rural uses. It may not be a royal designation, but it has now been, it's now been used in a way that is, that is more, that is more in keeping the way rural land does. Rural land, land is being used as opposed to development land. So I would say 50% of our land that was designated for development is now not going to be used in any way that's affect, that's an effective economic unit. We've got to figure that out for a host of community reasons, but we got to figure that out. And so I, I just think we're now at, I think the last thing I saw that we're now at 5.5% or 0.7% of the land of our development land is now available. We're basically done. And so people start knocking down things. And if that's, and if you, you know, I just feel is this plan gives you, gives us or gives future people a reasonable way to engage with the planning commission. On how do we sort of continue to bring this community forward? And it is not locked into where we're only going to be in a, a we're only going to be a rural community, we're going to be rural designated a community. I think that's.
So I'm gonna.
Back on that. We're three times in the develop, our development area is like three times the size of Charlottesville. And no one will look at Charlottesville and say Charlottesville is done developing.
Shh, that, that is one of those things that, you know, and there I am going to get in trouble on this. The boundaries between Albemarle and Charlottesville are false. And if I could click my fingers, they would be done and would be one unit, and then you would have your way. So this whole idea of using Charlottesville, which has, it's, which grew out of the University of Virginia, and I don't need to get into that whole origin there in the, in the 1800s. And how most of the rural area around here promoted an, an economic basis that excluded most of the people who are sitting on this, on this dais. Excluded most of the people who are sitting on this dais. So to tell me that somehow or another, the Albemarle County is some, some Nirvana or some utopia compared to Charlottesville, that is, we will wrestle around that conversation all night if you want to continue there.
So why don't we, um, why don't we, we, can we put a checkmark next to development areas, boundaries, land swapping, any other comments that we want to address there?
I think we've got that language.
I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify on page 11 of the GMP where you wanted to include that the process should include a robust community engagement. Where specifically did you want that added? Just so that we can have proposed amendments.
I'm happy if we just have the general sort of statement, if you, if you are a counselor, just general statement to sort of put that type of a note, make sure we're clear in the direction of the note and sort of both the exact language or location.
That's okay. Yeah, just a separate, I think a separate, I mean, I.
Separate statement.
Yeah, I think just.
There's a separate statement that we can put that in there. And that way, but give us a little, if you wouldn't mind, I think we can put the intent.
Under, under process, so you, so you have a subheading there and that page 11 says process. So it'd be the under process to incorporate.
I could say something like the Board of Supervisors utilizing a robust community engagement process could pursue a boundary revision independently of a future area planning effort.
Yeah, that works, works.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry, but why would it say the Board of Supervisors instead of just the county? Like.
I don't know.
Why is the planning commission not able to have this conversation?
Maybe a good question for staff as to why that's there.
Why would it have to say the Board of Supervisors? What's the legal criteria for that?
Yeah, can it just say the county or?
Yeah. Go ahead.
You dig it.
Maybe did they ask to be able to do that?
Well, I think I would look at that as the sort of the royal we type of thing. I mean, obviously if they're going to do something like this, I'm sure they're gonna staff's gonna be looking at it. We're gonna be talking with the planning commission and, and they're the ones taking action. So I think it's written in that way. It wasn't an intent to
Okay.
exclude the planning commission.
Then I would recommend the county utilizing a robust community engagement process could pursue a boundary revision independently of blah, blah, blah.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
So segueing on to, let's do the affordable housing piece. And there were some suggestions for the housing HSG section.
Are we, are we going to this based on the comments memo? Is that the order of the event?
That's just what I was using. I, I mean, if you want to do something else, that's.
You can, you can do that. I just, I don't have that document, so I don't know what's happening.
And I don't have it printed out or I could do it.
No, I do.
So.
Get your copy. I'll go get your copy.
I, I mean, if there's another way to do it.
I mean, Chair, you recall that we were just trying to help keep the thing organized and sort of like I think, I think our take on this thing was that the planning commissioners were going to have suggestions. And they were gonna, yeah. And they're gonna hear stuff from the county, from the, from the audience. So we're just trying to keep you organized.
No, I agree. And, and it is a bit of a, this is a bit of a challenge at the end to be able to handle. So let's, let's, I'm gonna suggest this. Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Vivin, do you guys agree with, is, I'm gonna just sort of speak to the broad topics that are represented as if you, you don't even need, to say you don't even need this to reference. And then we can talk about those broad topics. The, the Board of Supervisors will have this document that speaks to more specifics. Oh, there you go.
Okay.
Magic. All right. Well, then we'll go back to this. Add new objective implement strategies to support low income home buyers with support of community partners. Are we in support of recommending that be considered?
I'm sure, you know, I have no problem with, I would like to know more about the community partnerships that the county plays an active role in.
Right.
For instance, there's the housing, there's the regional housing partnership, there's the, the news, the, 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 the regional transit thing that's being, that's being stood up. And so before I become prescriptive about what the county should do, I'd like to know what the, the existing agencies that the county is now a full part of is doing. Cause they may be doing these things. I, I don't, I don't have enough information to know that, because these all seem very reasonable, absolutely very reasonable. But they may be being worked at right now.
Other thoughts?
I mean, looking through Emily Dreyfus's comments in general, I think there's a lot of, of, of good material there.
Yeah.
Kind of echoing something from before though, like, like getting up here and wordsmithing on the dais is not my favorite thing, uh, when it's been such a long, a long process. In terms of like adding whole new objectives or requiring inclusionary zoning, things like that are like pretty big gnarly topics that, that are difficult to introduce today. Uh, it's not to say that we shouldn't necessarily. In fact, I think a lot of these are potentially very important areas in our quiver. Uh, I mean, some of the simpler ones like, you know, adding the subordinate clause and other incentives or, and properly address housing. I mean, those are straightforward enough.
Yeah.
But overall, I just, I get a little twitchy about, about adding lots of new language at this phase.
I agree with you. And, and I feel like our, I, I agree with you and I feel that our housing, not only our chapter about affordable housing in this document, plus the affordable housing strategy that the county has already adopted are very comprehensive. And already support working with partners and already support.
Yeah.
It do, I, I feel like that's covered between those two policies.
That as well.
All right. Does everybody agree with that? Is there any other section in, from that HSG narrative or criteria that we want to we want to champion?
Chair, will, will all of this be transmitted to the supervisors too? Yeah, so they'll see this doc, they'll see the, the two-page document or the multi-page document?
We are providing a commendium of public comments.
That's all.
That basically went to both the planning commission and majority and went to the board as well. Uh, again, the intent was if the planning commission heard something that they wanted to pull up and champion, that we would have that as a reference, we will, as you were talking about it, so we could find on the screen.
Thank you, thank you.
So I think it's fair from a record standpoint to say that we generally agree with the input from the ASAT, HSG comments. And they have those two references, correct?
Yes.
I don't know that they necessarily would constitute an amendment, because I think a lot of those.
Yeah.
Are covered, but.
Are in, in there.
They're, they're gonna see them.
Okay, any other areas that? Any commissioners would like to do champion as we move through this?
Are we, are you discussing that by chapter then?
Well, I'm moving now to D A L U Chapter Implementation Section. I've scrolled down a bit.
I'm very simple. I just have two items in the entire document.
Okay, awesome. Well, let's go through this if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Cause there's one major one that I'm saving till the end, which we need to talk more about, which is the edit to the future land use map. So I'm trying to get us through this to get to that, but I don't want to diminish the importance of any of these, if any commissioners feel they want to champion any, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think 1.3 is one that intrigues me a lot. I'd very much like to explore it. Again, sort of adding a whole new objective at this stage is a little difficult. Um, the idea of an affordable housing overlay right now is, is sort of in the same vein as, uh, maybe not, but, um, you know, when I've suggested before that we just don't have neighborhood residential, but we start with middle. Um, I, I think, sure, either of those could be, again, errors in the quiver, but, but it's a little difficult to add that right this minute.
So you highlighted basically 1.3 updating the zoning ordinance to create an affordable housing overlay across the entire development area, correct?
Uh, I, I'd say it's worth, you know, exploring positively here.
I had that one actually also flagged, yeah.
And, and Chair, I, but I would like to understand that in.
Me too.
In, not necessarily in here, but how that would be support, supportive and how that it would interact with the, with the affordable housing or the, the density bonuses which are now being played out.
Absolutely, the bigger picture.
And so, you know, because I know at some, I imagine at some point that this, that, that we will and the supervisor will have to wrestle with that. Once we know whether or not it's working or not, or once we get feedback from developers, whether or not it's, you know, they're, they're feeling, and.
Yeah.
They're seeing that as an incentive to build those things. And I think is at that point, then you sort of say, well, how about if we do this? How, does that help? Particularly with the, I think we're in the process of looking at the Ryle Small Area Plan. Is that coming back? I think that's under. So, so that may be the, that may be the lab in which these, that something like this could be pushed. And, uh, not pushed, excuse me, could be, could be discussed and explored in that, in that area.
Well, and, and I'll just add that, and, and to continue to beat our drum about measurable outcomes and how we measure goals that we're setting forth in this policy would lead us to that. And that's why they're so important. And I know that we have, we've listed how we're going to measure things, but it, but it is important to take them into practice. And this is a perfect example into housing.
Agreed. So moving us down and anybody can stop me and move us back. Um, just going through the comments about, um, the use of minimum of 80% local native species in all county projects and projects reviewed by county staff.
So I'll just mention that that's in our current comprehensive plan. Um, and so, so if you, if you look, um, in the current conference plan, it says, um, Albemarle County, um, sorry, let's see if I can find the exact page, on 4.25, um, it, it has a section that talks about, um, using 80% native plants and for community development projects. So I think, I think this is in line with what we're already doing. And I think it makes sense to go ahead and include this in our current comprehensive plan and expand that scope a little bit, um, to include all county properties. It's a pretty easy standard to me. The county has, has met it already and, and almost everything that's done. So it just seems like, you know, we should continue the good work we're already doing.
Well, the bottom line is the comprehensive plan is a guideline, right? So by recommending that, we're essentially adding that as a guideline.
Correct.
So do you have, Commissioner Murray, any idea specifically where you would want to insert that language?
Yes, yes, I do. Um, so just one second. So I think that should be, um, added under the Environmental Stewardship Chapter.
Yep.
Un, under, um, Objective War.
Yeah, I was looking at that. I just didn't know specifically where. 4.22? Staff, any thoughts on where that might fit best?
We've got you up to here.
Yeah, you're there.
Thank you. I mean, I think it would work best as its own standalone objective.
It doesn't really fit in.
So it would be 4.10. And do we agree with the language that says use a minimum of 80% locally native species?
Just a moment, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, point out the language of 4.4. I'm gonna enlarge this on the screen, just a second.
4.4?
Yeah. Yeah, so 4.4 under the Environmental Stewardship Chapter, um, it's on using and modeling best practices on public lands, including, and we have a bullet list here, which includes management plant removal invasives. Protect, restore habitat areas. Um, so it could potentially be added as a bullet under 4.4 or a, a new action 4.5?
And I think it fits under 4.4.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I agree. So we would add there, use a minimum of 80% local native species on all county projects and projects, all county projects, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, the next one, talking about the land swapping again, I think we've talked about that. Um, several of those, right?
There are a collection of those.
So those are.
Yeah. I had the, okay, let's go to the request to consider a revision to this future land use map. Work on that. That was from Sweet Spot of Albemarle.
Oh, right. Could, 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 could we have just a bit of, of history on that? I was intrigued by the app, or not, by the owner of the property saying that they changed their property type at the request of the county. And so it would be helpful to know what it was prior to that. And it would be helpful to just have confirmed somewhere that the county did ask them to do that.
Thought it was rural.
I don't know. I don't, I, I'm, I'm asking.
I believe it was.
I could assume it was, but I'm asking.
Michael's on it, could tell.
What was it?
Yeah, so as part of the 2015 plan, this was one of the last components, they, they enlarged the, the development area to include this parcel. And it was designated as industrial in part because of the, um, DeChutes Brewery. And, and there was also a Conference of Plan Amendment that they had a resolution of intent to not only look at, you know, to look at other parcels sort of, cause at the time, I, my understanding, I was not here, so I don't have all the details in my head. But my understanding is the, the DeChutes property was gonna take more than just one parcel of land. And so I hope I have this right. And so there was a CPA that was also, you know, they took a resolution of intent to study multiple parcels south of this particular parcel as well for potential inclusion, um, if DeChutes was gonna come. So I believe that is the correct history. Yeah, I got the head nods, so I got that removed.
Here on the planning commission during the time, so I do remember. And, um, this was, this was initiated by the county because of the desire to have the land in appropriate zoning for this potential new use. I was not in support of that change. And in fact, at the time, it was, um, proposed to create a much larger area, which Liz Palmer, who was the supervisor at the time, and myself as the commissioner, were against over enlarging that area and fought it back down to a much smaller area and kind of, you know, took our victory, if you will, that it wasn't much, much larger because it was way more than even what DeChutes needed. Um, and I could go into a really boring and long history about why the DeChutes was never gonna work there. It was not, the site was not, it was not pad ready. It had, did not have all of the things that an industrial user looks for in a construction-ready site, not even close to it. Um, we had a workshop following that about the four or five stages of readiness and this was at a level one instead of a level five. I mean, it was just so far off. Anyway, I understand their, their difficulty now in trying to market that as an industrial site. It, it isn't, it isn't a good spot for an industrial site. I don't know that I'm prepared though, having just seen this request in the last hour and a half or hour to make this change to the future land use map. But my inclination is that mixed use would be more appropriate. Because of the site sensitivities and all that, it isn't a good industrial pad site. And it's, if it were an industrial use that had trucks coming in and out, that's also a bad spot for that. So, but I don't know that I can make that. I'm not, I, I feel like that's its own hearing that we would have about then. And I'm sorry for that namby-pamby answer, but.
No.
I've told you my inclination and I've told you my discomfort with having to make that decision on the fly this evening, having only just received this request.
Karen's on?
Yes, I mean, I agree with you all heartily. I don't, I don't believe this is the right, uh, designation for that area. I don't think it fits there well at all.
Meaning, meaning industrial.
Industrial.
Right.
So what it currently is. So I would be in support of making that change. I also agree with you that it's like, okay, at the same, however, what we're doing is we're making a recommendation for the supervisors.
Right, it's not a zoning change, it's a recommendation for what would be more appropriate than something else.
And I would feel comfortable recommending that, that a mixed use is a more, is more appropriate than heavy industrial for that area. I would say for my part too, we just had a public hearing not, you know, a few weeks ago, uh, was for the parcel next door. So it got me to really understand that, that part of our county a lot more closely.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I've had to understand it a lot, so.
Yeah, right, right.
But.
And so, uh, uh, so yeah, I mean, I think I would probably support that small change as well, just given, you know, that explanation and also just seeing what's next to it.
I would, I, I would, I, I won't belabor it. I would support it too. I have some narrative about that, but I, I would support it, support it too. Um, since we know at one point that property was in dial, was in, the owners of the properties were in conversation about doing something different there. And I'm all for conversation. And so if we can move this project a little bit, if we can move the project that came to us in a way that will allow a more meaningful connection to Hedge Row Park, so that we would use some of that property that without that connection, it's going to be more green space. Lovely green Albemarle space, that it could be useful if, if we could do something. So I, I am, I am, I am in favor of that also, Chair.
Mr. Murray, thoughts?
While I am also a little bit uncomfortable about this coming to us at this stage and without an in-depth conversation of the implications, particularly for an area that does have topographic challenges, um, you know, an area that's, that's already forested as well. You know, we talked, and when we talked about the, the, we talked about the developmental swaps, we, we particularly called out areas with topographic challenges, um, and places that were hard to develop, um, as areas that might be candidates to be swapped. It almost seems like this is one of those areas that almost seems like a candidate be swapped. But, but that said, um, I feel that, um, I'm generally in support of, of the idea of this being.
Well, I, um, I'll just weigh in here. I think I'm a man on an island here. I, I think I'm really concerned. I may have heard from lots of people in this area, as you can imagine, and Sherwood Farms and others that are very concerned about what's happening across the street and the impacts on the traffic, et cetera, and the infrastructure. And the environmental features of the site as well. I don't feel that there's been, I mean, this is a, you know, we're changing the future land use map if we say that this is, this can be changed. This is a, a last minute thing, as we've all sort of said. I don't think the community's had a chance to weigh in on this. We, we got it on, it's getting in under the wire. It's going right to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow for a conversation and then the 15th of October. We've been talking about this for four years. I just don't see why this is happening at this point. To be perfectly honest, so I would not support this request because there are other, there are, as we heard from staff, potential other opportunities coming down the line for applicants to request comprehensive plan amendments.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So that's.
Yeah, and I, I think what you're, what you said is very convincing to me is that point that, that, that there's no chance for the public to weigh in. We didn't advertise this as that kind, it's not in the, wasn't in the materials that, that we've changed this.
So counter to that, right? And is that this is a public hearing and we do make recommendations to the, to the board through public hearing process, we can easily make recommendations that we generally support the intention or that you all generally support the intention of this. Um, in general, but we, we're also raising concerns about the process that it's undertaken. So I don't know if we need to say anymore other than what we've just said, and that gets the point across to the, to the commit, to the supervisors. Yeah.
I would just say, if I understood it, maybe yourself and maybe Karen were not in favor, but everyone else was amenable to making this change, to, would said, correct?
Well, I, I think we were, so we're talking through it. That's what, that's what we do here and, and while I, I think that the change is appropriate, the land use change is appropriate.
The timing is.
The process and how you do that. And I, and I think what, what sways me is, 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 is the Chair's point about there is no public hearing on that. There is no public discourse or they haven't been notified.
Getting it to the current designation that it has, and it was controversial.
So, so I, so I, that gives me pause to just say, okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. So.
Well, and I, I don't, and you guys can correct me, I think technically there is a public hearing, but it's the board public hearing, right? There's, they haven't had an opportunity to be represented here.
It's not specific to this, the, the public hasn't gotten to notification that this is.
In advance of, for this evening.
Yep. Michael?
Yeah, so just if.
Straw poll?
If you wouldn't mind, just, just one more show of hands, maybe those who are, you're the Chair. Let's show of hands. And, and, and that way, that way, that we, Mr. Vivins, while I'm asking this is, I think if you recall, we, we were talking about, the Chair was talking about earlier on. What we're doing here right now is we're going through and what do you all want to add to the plan? What do you want to tweak on the AC44? And if you guys are inclined to, we just did it with the 80% of native species, of plant species, right? And here we're all talking about a land use map change, future land use map change. If you all are comfortable making that type of change, that's fine. We're going to, when we get through this discussion period, we're gonna ask you to take a five-minute, 10-minute break. We're gonna make sure we got a, a good list of the amendments that you want to recommend onto the board. Um, and, um, if this is one of them, I think it'd be helpful to know at this point is this one where we want to throw into that, that list of recommended changes to the document.
But what I heard initially was that there was support for this in general as a land use, which is what we essentially oversee. I'm more concerned about process.
Process, right.
And, and so.
So it seems like most people are saying, I'm seeing heads nod, as far as process, this is the problem. And so this is not the venue for this change.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Right. Because it wasn't advertised.
Right. I think they, they've heard that. And I think that's all we need to do on this.
Cheers. Thank you so much.
Okay. Are there any other items that the planning commission would like to champion?
Yeah. And I had two.
Good.
Not that, not.
Twenty-two.
Sorry. I had two, just two changes. Um, and these were, this one was, one was a word, one was a wording change. Sorry. I'll tell you the second one was an objective. I don't know how to, this pages work. D A L U forty-two. Protecting and increasing access to nature.
Twenty-two, did you say?
Four-two.
Four-two.
Forty-two.
Yeah, four, four zero.
In which paragraph?
Zero.
Uh, I wanted to add a sentence and now then they'll have a typesetting challenge, but I wanted to add a sentence to the end of the first paragraph.
Sorry, what was your sentence?
Okay. So the con, I'll tell you the concept and then I'll tell you the sentence. The, the thing that I'm concerned about is that in several years ago, when the state stormwater law was updated, they had a committee to recommend changes to it. The committee recommended that onsite water quality treatment be required. And that was struck by the legislators when they wrote the bill. And so an expert panels and recommendations were not followed. And what we've seen is a huge decline in bioswales, French strains, all kinds of best management practices onsite to treat water quality. People are buying offsite credits. So your water quality locally declines in your community and somewhere else in the James watershed, a stream is restored. And that's great, but it doesn't help the local water quality. So this is a sentence I wanted to add and I'll, I'm going to hand this to the staff. To minimize degradation of local surface waters, onsite best management practices to treat runoff and improve water quality are preferred over the purchase of offsite credits. So how would that come into play? We have cajoled several developers to add onsite water quality treatment by simply preaching that up here on the dais. I would just like to put it in as a county preference that we would like to see that wherever possible. So it's not a law. It's just saying that this is what we would like to see. This is to prevent local water quality degradation. So.
Any thoughts?
It's just, it's just said.
I'm, I'm supportive of, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of the concept since I've, I've watched my colleague cajole and, and change behavior. The, the, the thing that I'm wondering is the, is, is it, is it need, is it necessary to confine it to what, to credits?
Well, let me.
Only looking forward. So, so saying that we want it to be onsite is says you don't confine it, you don't confine the out to credits and you're.
Yeah, you still can have, you could still buy outside credits, but why I wanted to add that sentence was my concern with the preceding sentence that's currently there, which reads, it is also recognized that impacts to some natural resources will occur as new development proposals strive to meet the higher density and intensity goals for the development areas. So it's an acknowledgement that as we develop and intensify density, we will see decline in natural resources. Now, I don't want to just give up, give up. I would like to say, however, we would really like to see onsite water quality treatment. It can be done.
I like that.
Yeah. So, so that when I read that sense, I just didn't want to be like, leave it with, oh, well.
Can we?
We're just going to decline, but we'll have density. So I just wanted to add a little plug for hello, we can onsite improve water quality.
Can, can we change that onsite to local?
I, 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 I didn't, um, I didn't write, oh, to local. Well, onsite was really for, to get at the developer's site.
Yeah. But I mean, I'm saying there may be, there may be opportunities where the mitigation doesn't happen onsite, but where like if there's.
Oh, nearby, next door.
Where happens nearby.
Fine with that, if you want to say local. I just really am trying to get at, yeah, not you, you can mitigate, you can buy credits within the same watershed. We sit in the James watershed, which goes from Highland County to the Chesapeake Bay.
Yeah.
And so anywhere in there, they could fix something. Yeah. Anyway, I, I, I can get off my soapbox. Just say yes. I'm just kidding. Torture by verbiage.
So could, can I?
Yeah.
So I, I'm concerned about eliminating the onsite. I think they.
Just say it's preferred.
No, no, I know. But, but saying, saying, however, it is preferred to have onsite treatment or local. So, so to, to give them, I mean, I think you still want to point him to the onsite.
I do. That would be the first line of, the first preference.
But then you can also say, or, or.
Or nearby.
Nearby or local. Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
And just to beat the other side of the same drum, which is covered in that previous sentence, if we're preaching unlocking density in the development areas, we do have to look for alternatives potentially.
Correct. But like, whereas I've, I've talked about, yeah, that I worked with local architects to create a zoning for Charlottesville that allowed them to double density as long as they added water quality BMPs, which they did, and it was fine.
And sometimes you push a little bit, it can be an amenity.
Yeah.
As it just.
Exactly. Exactly. It can be a beautiful garden that is also providing pollinator habitat and cleaning water. And people want to live next to it. They don't even know it's a stormwater feature and you know that because you develop land.
Yeah. And I think, you know, natural features like this, it's something that they can go hand in hand very well with density. So I don't think we, we shouldn't just say it's one or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I didn't like about the tone. I didn't like the tone that density equals degradation and that's it. It's like, it does not. You could actually, guys, when you redevelop an area, you can add water quality treatment into it and have a more dense and less runoff, healthier environment.
Yeah.
We have great designers sitting right here. Okay. Um, I have one more. I was pointing at you or you, you guys can find it out. Um, I have one more. It's a totally different. I feel like I only have two tonight. Okay.
Did you, before you go to the next one, did we get the language?
I think what I'm going to, she just said she was going to give us the language.
Okay.
Give us a second. We'll use the, we'll get that language and when we.
Great.
Do the wrap up, we can make sure we got it all right.
I wrote it here and I wrote your edit there live.
Excellent.
Okay. I am a teacher. I write live. Okay. Um, I have on CF dash twenty. Way forward in the document. I wanted to add a new objective and this is in the section. CF fourteen, and then you have the implementation objectives.
H twenty.
CF twenty. I'm sorry. I find this document hard to navigate. I was going to ask if we could, when we do finally print it, if there could be tabs or something.
Table code.
Even just tabs, this would be so nice. I'm constantly shifting through this. Okay.
Just as a quick sidebar, I would like to point out that we do have active links in the table of contents on the version of the document that's posted to the AC forty-four website. So you can't click on the chapter title. So it's, the navigability is improving at least. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Under objective, uh, CF ten, which is the main object, I wanted to add an action, excuse me, not an objective. That topic is improve urban stormwater management, drainage and flood control. And so one thing that I thought was lacking, which I work with many communities across Virginia and the South on doing, so it can be done, is I added this action, I made it ten point four. Seek opportunities to add stormwater best management practices to older neighborhoods lacking, lacking stormwater management. Now you could arguably write that better.
Just take out lacking.
Yeah. Well, what I'm trying to get, yeah, I, just for the context for everyone, especially for the audience. The Clean Water Act was passed in nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty, nineteen seventy-two, and it feels like a long time ago. And then we had the, the stormwater amendments in nineteen eighty-seven that required stormwater management, but many of our neighborhoods are way older than nineteen eighty-seven. And so we have large swaths of the urban area and the county, and even the city of Charlottesville that do not have stormwater management. The water runs off, it goes in storm drain, it pollutes the Savannah River, whatever. So, uh, just to add that that was an objective or excuse me, an action, retrofitting older neighborhoods, adding BMPs in should be an action within our comprehensive plan. And I didn't see it anywhere in the whole plan. So it's a minor point. But later on, when we are applying for grants and things and they say, is this, you want to retrofit this neighborhood to add infiltration? Is it in your policy documents? We can say, yes, it's right here. I write a lot of grants too. So believe me, if you have it as a policy and then you want to get funding for it, it helps. Maybe not under this current federal administration, but there's always hope for the future.
Are we still open? Is, is there, is there still a fellow federal administration? Oh, yes, it's.
I think the government is ending in five hours.
Five hours, I think. So you better get, Chair, we better get out of here.
All right. Commissioner Firehawk, anything else? So.
No, that, I told you, I just had two.
All right.
I, I, oh, okay. I'll make a closing statement. I was heartened to see how much of our comments and the public's comments have worked their way into the plan.
Yep.
And, um, so that is why my comments are few and not many like in prior meetings.
Awesome. Commissioner Karazan, any closing comments or thoughts?
I echo those comments and I thank you, thanks to the staff and, and to my colleagues on the dais. I know it's been a long road to get here, but, um, there's a lot of good work. So thank you.
Commissioner Murray, do you have something?
Yeah. Um, I mean, I'll call out to the significant improvements in here, particularly in recognizing multimodal traffic. Some, some great advancements in sustainability.
Yes.
You know, better recognition of the diversity of our county and, and the importance of that. I do have some serious concerns though, about where we ended up on some of this. Um, and I'm an outlier, I suppose. But, um, since the nineteen eighties, a core principle of our comprehensive plan has been protection of the rural area. And I fear that the vaguely worded language around swaps open the doors to significant expansion of the development areas. Since, since, as I said, the development, the, the current definition of underperforming areas could apply to majority of our existing development area. So I'm just going to register that that is still a, a significant concern of mine that I think it, it undermines a fundamental principle that we've had since, since nineteen eighty.
Commissioner Bivens, any thoughts? And I don't mean to like go down the line if we have other.
I have a final, a final thought after.
We all have thoughts. So, so, so it helped me to come to a realization that this is similar to a strategic plan.
Sorry.
It's similar to a strategic plan. This is, this is the idea that we hope for the next X amount of years will guide, guide and send signals to a whole host of people who need guidance and who are looking for signals. It is not a perfect plan. It will never be a perfect plan. Because if it was, we would probably be having sleepovers for the next fifteen years and I'm not encouraging that. But what I do think it does, I do think it does, when people, remember folks, land is, is an economic agent. And we are hopefully facilitating decisions that people do with cash assets. Whether or not it's a decision to sell their house or sell their property and go do something else, or it's something for somebody to come invest here and do something. One of the things that we are called to do is make that decision process easier than it has been. And I believe that this comprehensive plan is definitely easier than it was. Will it be when you do, when you work on the zoning, which will also be as a way of sending a signal to what people can do when they come here? Hopefully that same, that same sort of esprit will take place there. But, and perhaps in, when you do this again, it'll go down to a hundred pages or two hundred pages, which would be lovely. But I, I am pleased at where we are. Could I be crankier about some stuff? Of course. That's my nature. But where we are tonight, I think we, the community and staff and this, and this, and the commission should be pleased with how this is going to end up. I really do. And since I've been told by Mr. Barnes that people will be able to adjust it in the future, then I'll look forward to following up and see how, how people bring adjustments to you.
We're going down the line? Okay. Well, I, I want to, uh, just say how much I appreciate the amount and, and the quality of work that's gone into this. I know at every step, I can see how dedicated our staff has been into drafting and redrafting and collecting feedback and, and creating something that's, that's a very big project to create. And I missed the last meeting where we talked about the AC forty-four. So I also want to share how much I appreciate adding, uh, that seventh big move around, uh, social and cultural connection. And I, and I do hope that opens the doors for, for more intentionality around, you know, arts and parks and third spaces, um, as we move forward as a county. I mean, I do have, if I had one overarching critique, it's, it's that AC forty-four is frankly, I think too wedded to our current status quo. You know, across the country, the, the gateway to the American dream is closing. You know, this is a great time to already own a home, already be employed, already have a partner. But if you don't have those things, it's harder and harder and harder to achieve any of them. And, and Alamo County is not the most extreme example of, of that door closing, but, but we're part of that trend. And we've created this place where it's so nice to be already comfortable, um, with, with good salaries and, and owned homes. But it's becoming more and more difficult for people who are not so comfortable. And now they don't live here. They live in Savannah. They live in Waynesboro. They live in Green County. Uh, and then when they have these long commutes into Charlottesville and, and I, I, I do wish we had a comprehensive plan. And I do think we're headed in the right direction kind of generally, but it's, you know, where the American dream is more achievable for more people in our region. Where we can all be physically safe and economically secure and feel seen and heard and have a sense of belonging and experience beauty. And I think there's some good things in AC forty-four that, that move us sort of in that general direction. I think it's too slow and too tied to the status quo. For people who are here and just trying to make it and just trying to pay their rent and who are juggling expensive childcare and elder care and underpaid jobs. I think for those people, and there's a lot of them, we should be moving faster. Overall, uh, uh, you know, obviously I support this thing. We put in a lot of effort and I think it's great to, to be working on this as a county and, and, and trying to improve the lives of the people who live here and work for wages. But I also want to sort of make that note that I do wish we could move a little faster on some things.
Commissioner Far.
I'm going to resist my speech about how we should rezone to the densities that we want and make it super easy for everyone to redevelop to the density we want. Because that is what I've said all along. We should just go ahead and do all the rezoning to the development area. But anyway, that's not what I was going to say because I've already said that every single meeting on the comp plan. I wanted to just also reemphasize the importance that we do get to the rural chapter or the rural plan for the county. Because there was a sentiment that the, the, the plan does not go far enough. And it's acknowledged in here in this document that it, the, the rural area is treated like an amorphous blob of ruralness. And it's, you know, farming and forestry happens there and some people live there, but it's, it's too unspecific. And so the promise was made to do a rural plan and later that treat that looks at the different regions and districts and thinks about their character and gets more into the finer points. So we were pacified with that promise and I just want the county to be sure to keep that promise. And look at you leaders and staff and people. And, and if we don't move fast enough, I'll just hold my own conference with my friends in the audience and we'll talk about it and push the ball forward. But I really want to emphasize that we're not going to let that flounder that we, I know we need a break, but we, at some point in the near term, I hope we will take that up and get into that important work as well. I'll now step off my soapbox.
I'll climb up on it.
Okay.
Uh, just a couple of thoughts. Well, well, more than a couple, but a few thoughts. First of all, thank you to staff. I mean, this has been a huge lift and, and it took longer than we initially anticipated. But I think for all the right reasons and it's not something that needs to be rushed. You know, oftentimes we talk about leases that we're writing that are a hundred years. And this is a lot shorter than that, but it's also not a year. It's an important document to be thinking about for the next twenty years. And the fact that it took a little bit longer is, I think justified and, and we've, I think come out in a good spot. So also commend the staff for out of box thinking. I do think there are aspects of this that yeah, it's a little bit status quo, right? There's also an aspect of don't fix what ain't broke. And, and so I think it's a balance that has to be worked on. And I think through the creative thinking of staff, I think that's been, uh, achieved with the understanding and, and I agree, it's not a perfect plan. It's a, also a bit of a living document, right? So. It's a, also a bit of a living document, right? So there are opportunities. It's not like it for twenty years. This is an opportunity for us to continue to think about this and refine it. Um, it is a milestone, however, um, and additional miles lie ahead. Community engagement process, you know, I, I sometimes scratch my head and I wonder why. There aren't more people who get involved, even though there was a fair amount of really good, in some cases turnout, in some other cases, it was not a great turnout. So for whoever's listening and for us, just, you know, I think the opportunity to be part of a community to provide feedback is. It's democracy. It's incredibly important to do. You, you know, back to that concept of things not being perfect, some of what we've talked about tonight and throughout this process. You know, it's a lot of, of land use discussion and land use, if this makes sense, is really not digital, right? It's analog. I mean, every site's different, every project is different, everything, and we're trying to create a plan. That encompasses all of that and puts it into one area and that's part of the reason it could never be perfect, but it's also. I think part of the reason that it's, it's so diverse. Um, I think it was much simplified. I've been around here for a long time and I think I've, you know, I've worked with a couple of comprehensive plans. And this one, I think, is not only simplified, but also, in my opinion, emphasizes the right things. Um, respecting preservation while looking for ways to unlock development in the growth areas and ways to consider that. Um, and then the last thing I'll mention is this idea of metrics, right? We've talked about. How do we measure progress? How do we measure how well we're doing on this document? And so this is our chance to touch this and to have a public hearing and to recommend approval or not. Uh, not sure how everybody's gonna vote, but um, it is also. You know, an, an ongoing process that will be something we need to hold ourselves accountable to as a county. Not just now, but for the next twenty years, right? And how are we doing and how do we? So we may find times and places we need to revisit when we come back to this and that's part of that green living document that it's, it's going to be. So with that, um, do you want to take a recess to get those, or did we give you enough time to get those few comments tweaked?
I think I might have a.
You have a?
I, I think so, so I could go.
I would recommend just a short recess so that we can confer and make sure the language is correct.
That clock is wrong. So it's seven fifty-two, what? So now it's seven fifty-three. Why don't we recess till eight o'clock? Is that enough time?
Thanks Karen, you got.
All right, I, I, welcome back. We're back in session.
Okay.
A little bit after eight o'clock. I want to rush staff. You guys, okay?
I think so.
Okay. So I think what we're gonna review on the screen is what we've discussed and this would be what we would suggest as. Either an amendment, right? Or I guess direction to the board.
So we have the motion on the screen and then we also have the resolution that includes the language. That we just went through. Yes, you have, you have a draft of the resolution, but we've gone ahead and amended that resolution. To include the amendments that we just talked about.
And you'll show us this?
Yes, one second. Sorry.
Me and Russia.
Working between two screens here. Can drop, can grow as a tree. Let me get out of the, sure. There it is.
Do we need to read any of this into the record or is this?
Will be, but if we approve it, it will go into.
Right, by, by recommending adoption of the resolution with the amendments. Um, that will include that with it. We did prepare those with sort of, as we usually do it with underlining for. New information and strikeouts if we were removing language, just for, for your review.
Got it. Okay, thank you. So, um, I'm just gonna read them just for the sake of if there's members of the public can't see this. I, so the first one is under page GMP eleven, process ideally the need for development area boundary revision would be identified by a future area planning effort. The county could pursue a boundary revisions with robust community engagement for future area planning effort. For. A future player area planning effort and should request that county executive direct staff to develop a development areas report. What was, where was that? Oh, that's page GMP eleven.
Yep.
That was under the process paragraph.
All right, thanks for the remedial help. So. Did say ideally the need for development area boundary revision would be identified by a future planning effort. Period. The county. Could pursue a boundary revision independently of a future. Vision with robust community engagement, inclusive of robust community engagement. All right, for a future, yeah, area. I guess that's right. Yeah. Everybody, sorry.
I'm sorry, somehow you, the way you read it hurt my brain. I read it fine.
Sorry, my brain is hurting. All right. I'll belabor that. Um, page, so number two. Everybody good with the first one?
Yes.
Heading, so number two, page GMP twelve, heading potential criteria for assessing. Removing underperforming areas from the development areas, including but limited to the following. Good?
Yes.
Number three, page ES eighteen, action four four, add sub bullet, use a minimum of eighty percent locally native species in all county projects. Good?
Yes.
Page DAL U forty-two, add the following sentence to the end of the first paragraph, to minimize degradation of local surface waters on. On-site or nearby best management practices to treat runoff and improve water quality are preferred over the purchase of off-site credits. Good? Then page CF twenty, adding action ten four, seek opportunities to add stormwater best management practice the neighbor is lacking.
I might just. I just wonder if there's an, an opportunity for the last one. We didn't get to have, I didn't get to make comment on there. We do have the ACAP program. And elsewhere we talk about, you know, encouraging incentives. I don't know there's anywhere in the comp plan that we talk about. Um, encouraging use of our, our county incentive program, which would in fact do that.
I couldn't hear the last part of.
Oh, I said, which wouldn't.
Or what program would in fact?
Oh, our Alamo County um, as Conservation Assistance Program, ACAP.
Yeah, that, that helps with that, but I'm talking about, say, for example, going out and jackhammering up part of a parking lot that's unused and putting it in a bioswale.
Um, that actually would qualify for those funds.
Well, I.
Yeah.
That's could be seeking opportunities, right?
It's fine.
Okay. All right, any other additions or amendments? Could you scroll up, please?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Too far, too far.
There we go.
So I can see that. Uh, thanks. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Ben.
Very good. Everybody good?
Thank you, sir.
All right, then do we have a motion? Want to go back to the motion language?
While he's doing that, I'll also say just to um, address your supportiveness of. The comments in housing regarding housing, we can add that to, we can pass that along to the board. So it's not necessarily a change of language, just that you're supportive of that language as well as the language about. Um, the sweet spot change.
Yep.
Generally supportive of the intent, but uncomfortable with the process.
Great, thank you. Generally in supportive of the.
Generally, yes.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution with amendments attached to recommending approval of CPA twenty twenty-one dash zero two.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
I would just like to thank, I mean, we have plenty of people who aren't here, who have transitioned away. And that I think it would be helpful if they heard from us that we appreciated all the work that they did, even though they're not here tonight. That they, that we appreciate the work that got us this far.
One hundred percent.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? All right, can we call the roll, please?
Hi.
Mr. Bibbins.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, well done, everybody.
Is there a cake?
Yes, there is a cake walk, which is.
All right, let's move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports the commissioners would like to share?
I do have some, but if somebody could go first and catch my notes.
All right, any other committee reports?
The historic preservation did not have quorum. He wouldn't follow us extra new fabulous members.
We gotta fix that some.
We did, we added more members.
Yeah, that's.
The others? No? All right, Commissioner Moore?
I was, I was very. Um, so the, uh, Croze CAC met, um, and we talked a lot about, um. Talked, talked a bit about, um, the mission of the organization and, and how they. The nature of the committee over time has, has sort of evolved into being more informative, where staff comes and presents ideas to us and. And we say, you know, we sort of nod or we walk away as, you know, informed, whereas in the past. It had been much more advisory in nature, um, as in title, with actual recommendations that we would pass along to the board of supervisors. And there was a general consensus that, um, that we did actually want to start moving more in the direction of being more advisory. Um, and providing recommendations, um, as opposed to just receiving information. So I thought it was a very interesting conversation that occurred. Uh, the other thing too, and I want to get the, the name right. Oh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get it right in here. So there was a, a joint MPO meeting, um, talking, talking about our, the localities in the valley. And, and also on, on our side and looking at, um, transportation opportunities about, um. You know, looking at, um. You know, for example, the, the idea of future rail, um, opportunities that can exist before.
Oh, yeah.
There was also, um, some of the new initiatives that have taken place, uh, like the afternoon express. Which has, has grown in ridership to, um, sixteen thousand people, which I think that's really impressive.
Sixteen thousand annually?
Yeah, and, and so, and then, um, UVA, I, I didn't know that too, UVA employees could get a pass to ride for free. Which, that was, that's interesting. Then also the, um, the Virginia Breeze and, and talking about the. Um, future, future connectivity that would provide, you know, sort of east-west connectivity. Um, and then, um, then I, I was also very, though this is a really, really long-term thing, but the. Uh, Virginia statewide rail plan, you know, that would provide for more commuter traffic along a rail system. And, and I particularly find that, um. You know, particularly in Croze, we have this, um, we've long had this little train station in Croze that was for a brief time, the, the Croze Library.
Yeah.
And, and I would love to see that come back again. I would, how, how great would it be for, you know, the, you'd be able to hop on a train and then go to Charlottesville or. Hop on a train and go to Stanton. I think that would be an enormous asset to the region. Um, then also, of course, the, an update on the three-notch trail. So that was a.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, good update.
All right, I've got two.
All right.
The Rio twenty-nine community advisory committee, uh, went well. There's a good conversation about, um. The form-based code and the Rio twenty-nine small area plan, which is coming up in line pretty soon for, uh, you know, checking it out and updating it. Um, and then over at the, uh, longest committee name I've ever been a member of, uh, the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee. Of the Charlottesville Alamo Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, or CTEC Campo. Uh, we had several presentations, uh, one about STAR studies assessing analyzing safety needs and making resident, uh, recommendations. Um, going up twenty-nine north from kind of hydraulic to Woodbrook was currently being studied. And then also, uh, the sort of twenty-nine two fifty, that sort of bypass interchange, uh, is also being studied. Also from, uh, CTEC Campo, um, we talked some about. What a, a, a Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee actually does and if it's needed, it's not required by law. There's only four out of fifteen. MPOs in the state that have one, and so do we really need, need one outside of, uh, long-range transportation planning processes? I don't have a particular, I actually don't have a strong opinion on that. And then, uh, um, and then the last one was that they did actually seek our review on, um, uh, the projects to, uh, submit for smart scale. Uh, in the next cycle. And so the ones coming down the pipe, a couple of obvious ones of suite of improvements at, at, at US twenty-nine and I sixty-four. Also a suite of improvements at Fifth Street and I sixty-four. And then a couple others, basically, um, uh, US twenty-nine northbound and southbound at Barracks and also Ivy Road. Uh, with the on, on-ramp and off-ramp extensions, um, and also maybe like dual exit lanes at Barracks. Uh, just to try and improve, uh, capacity there.
What were the first two? You mentioned sweep or street?
A, a, a suite of, of improvements at twenty-nine and I sixty-four and Fifth Street, I sixty-four.
Perfect. Great, thank you. All right, um, no more committee reports, move on to board, uh, review the Board of Supervisors meeting from September tenth and seventeenth. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, the September tenth work session meeting was. What we dealt with comprehensive plan, so you're, you're very much up to speed on what we were talking about at that. Um, the seventeenth, there were a couple of things that happened on that meeting. There was a work session in the afternoon, um, where we talked to the board to try and sort of, it's been issues with the fill. Section, um, in our ordinance and so. Staff held a work session with the board, trying to gather with their intent, what are they wanting us to do on that? And, um, so that'll be, work its way into an ordinance, uh, that will come in front of you all at some point in the future. Um, they also talked about, there was something on the transit occupancy tax, which unfortunately. I didn't pay attention to, so I couldn't give you that, but there was a public hearing on that. The other thing which was sort of land use related was, um, the utility easement on Huckleberry Hills, the name of this property. Um, apparently there was about three thousand feet of over, um. You know, overhead electrical service and on that property, it's got a conservation easement on it, held by the, uh. Alamo Conservation Easement Authority. And this new easement would, um, be a fifteen-foot wide corridor to underground the power. And that got approved. So not a lot of things that, uh, you all have seen before on those two meetings. Well, at least the latter one.
And then tomorrow is the completion of the work session for AC forty-four, right?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, this one that we have on the tenth, um, we went from two o'clock to almost eight o'clock. And we got through a lot of the, the, the document, but there were, in section, part three, there were the last couple of chapters. Board members sort of gave us their individual input afterwards. We tried to integrate that into the document that you all reviewed tonight and hopefully. We were able to capture that, but we need to go back and, and make sure that they. Have a chance to see what those changes they were talking about were actually manifested themselves, document reviewed tonight. So that's the purpose of tomorrow's meeting. Um, it's slated for about an hour and twenty minutes of discussion, so. That's relatively a short time on something like this.
Then in the evening, the hundred-foot height increase, right, for?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, so yes, there, there's a zoning text amendment, you know, you'll recall for, um, the taller. Uh, heights, special exception to allow taller heights for, uh, industrial properties to accommodate. More modern, um, industrial processes. And then, um, but back to the comp plan, just, and you, I'm just repeating what you heard tonight. We'll go on on the fifteenth for a, um, public hearing for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, could I, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So I, I noticed.
So I, I noticed, Mr. Barnes, that we've po, po, not paused, we've, not pod, that's the same difference. We've paused the, um, we've paused conversations around data centers.
Right.
And I'm wondering if you're at, at liberty to even give us the sketchiest of, of descriptions of, of, of when we might unpause data centers and. I think maybe a better way of answering that question is, I think that's being assessed right now at the board's level. And it's probably, um, whether or not to move forward at all. Okay, okay. I, I just, I, I, I spend some time in another part of the world and it's, it's quite stunning to me that they're talking about putting data centers in very remote places. And they're doing off-grid power plants for these out of the way places. And so I'm, I'm wondering whether or not what we're, what we're experiencing is that when users of data centers find a bit of resistance someplace, they go someplace else with less resistance and put power systems there that only will supply the, the data center so that they don't have to navigate whatever it might mean to have to navigate a place like Albemarle County. I'm just, I'm seeing a lot of that. And so I thought I should ask my, I should ask Mr. Barnes what's going on because it may be that it is gone and which in fact we'll see more of those kinds of packages in very odd places in America.
Well, I just, just got back from vacation in Davis, West Virginia, and they're having that debate right there about.
In a very hard place to reach in West Virginia.
All right. Any old business, new business or items for follow-up? All right. Seeing none, I will adjourn us to Tuesday, November, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm going to be here.
Hey, 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 stop that now. Stop that.
Don't change it.